So.
Yep, so for for record keeping purposes, um, this is the April thirteenth, um, virtual planning and zoning commission meeting for the town of Waterford. And it is officially started for folks who are listening in this this conversation is being or the meeting is being video and audio recorded. And if folks like to give up, we posted on our website, but also can be obtained through the planning and zoning office. Um, and I will turn it over to our chair to to get started.
All right, thank you, Abby. Uh, we will now call to order the the meeting of the planning and zoning commission of the town of Waterford on this day, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six thirty P M. Uh, Mark would like you, uh, do roll call, please?
Sure. Uh, Joe Buckley.
Here.
John Bashaw.
Here.
Tim Bleesdale.
Here.
Greg Massid.
Here.
Joe DiBono. Karen Barnett.
Here.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mark. All right, we will seat Karen for Mr. DiBono. All right, item number two, the approval of the March ninth, two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes.
Move approval of the minutes.
All right, thank you, Tim. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi, all right, that's so mo- so, uh, so moved. Item number three, receipt of applications, P L dash twenty-one dash four, request of shoreline scooter rentals LLC applicant handle investors LLC owner for special. Permit approval for a scooter rental facility at thirty-five Great Neck Road, I G zone, in accordance with sections eleven dot two dot twelve. And twenty-three of the zoning regulations, public hearing must be scheduled by, uh, June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Uh, this application is for a special permit, uh, to allow a scooter rental facility. At the Hendles Petroleum, uh, property. And the public hearing has been scheduled for April twenty-seventh, twenty-one.
All right, thank you, Mark. Item number four, public hearing, P L dash twenty-one dash three, request of ZZ Powder Coating LLC applicant. Forza Partners LLC owner. For special permit approval for light industrial use at eighty-two Boston Post Road, C G zone. In accordance with sections eight dot two dot eight. And eight dot one dot fifteen and twenty-three of zoning regulations, public hearing must close by May fifteenth, uh, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Um, I have the, uh, to read into the record.
Okay.
So, um, exhibit one, application is material. Exhibit two, eighty-two Boston Post Road site plan. Exhibit three, property survey showing existing conditions on land of ballot realty LLC eighty-two Boston Post Road dated June five, twenty eighteen. Exhibit four, special permit findings. Exhibit five, notice of public hearing advertised in the day newspaper on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one and April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Exhibit six, hearing notification letter to applicant dated March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, along with certificates of mailing. Exhibit seven, email correspondence dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one to Abby Pierceall from traffic officer Jake Nickerson. Exhibit eight, staff report dated March thirteenth, one. Exhibit nine, G I S mapping. Say.
Thank you, Mark. All right, do we have, um, a, uh, somebody representing the applicant tonight here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Attorney Sweeney, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, sir.
All right, it's the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Um, for the record, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a land use attorney and a partner at the law firm of Tobin Carberry. In New London, Connecticut, and as always, it's a pleasure to be back here in Waterford. I'm here tonight on the behalf of a Connecticut Limited Liability Company, uh, ZZ Powder Coating LLC, which is a local powder coating provider. That is currently headquartered in New London, Connecticut. My client has submitted a special permit application to relocate their business to eighty-two rear Boston Post Road. Into a leased space in an existing building just to the rear of City Tire. Uh, joining me tonight is, uh, the owners of, um, ZZ Powder Coating, uh, Dave and his son Zach Zerzuski. As well as Phil Gagnon, who is a representative of the landlord and the property owner, um, Forza Partners. Uh, tonight, I tend to be very brief. Um, this is, um, a fairly straightforward application, but I intend, you know, because it is a public hearing, I do need to create a record. Um, to give you a brief overview of the application we've submitted and also review with you the criteria. Uh, on the findings that are required that you make for any special permit, uh, application. Uh, Dave and his son Zach will be available if you have any specific questions about powder coating. Uh, I've learned a lot, you know, working with this client, but they're the experts and if you have specific questions, they'll be available. Um, I would note for the record and, um, Mark indicated in his, uh, list of exhibits, we have provided a legal notice of this hearing to all necessary. Um, nearby property owners consistent with your regulations. Um, I'd like to share on the screen at this point, hopefully, I don't have that ability. If if somebody could give that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Abby, you can do that, right? You're muted.
She's really, you should have that permission now.
Thank you so much. Can everybody see this? On the screen, okay? All right, this is a, an aerial view of the site, um, from the town's G I S system, and this is exhibit nine, um, in the record already. Um, the property that is in question is eighty-two, uh, Boston Post Road. The eighty-two rear designation applies to this building that's located in the back of this, um, this, uh, this site. Um, here's up here is City Tire, which is visible from Boston Post Road. If you're not familiar with this site, you might not even know this building exists back here. Uh, but it's got a variety of sort of commercial, um, retail slash industrial tenants, uh, in this, it's sort of a, a commercial incubator building. Um, this entire parcel is located, uh, within the town's general commercial zoning district. This, uh, site was approved back in the nineteen seventies by the commission, uh, first in nineteen seventy-two. For the front building and then later in nineteen seventy-six for the rear building. Um, this commission authorized the construction and the development of the paved parking areas, uh, as well. And, uh, over the years, in the, the last, um, uh, four or five decades, uh, these buildings have been, uh, home to a variety, a large swath of warehousing. And commercial slash retail slash industrial uses. Um, the proposed relocation of my client's powder coating business, uh, from Broad Street in New London. Would be limited to approximately a four thousand square foot space right here, you will see my cursor. In the existing building would be the first, uh, unit space, um, that's in this building. It's the prior tenant, uh, it's vacant right now, the prior tenant was a, um, a tile installer. There are no exterior changes proposed whatsoever, uh, to the building. There are no site changes or site work related to this, uh, application. This is simply a change in tenancy from, um, the last use, which was tile installation, um, to, uh, powder coating, which, uh, is a light manufacturing use. Under your regulations, we'll talk about that in a second. Uh, as you know, though, light manufacturing is allowed in your general commercial zone pursuant to section eight point two point eight. Now, your regulations lack a explicit definition for, quote, light manufacturing. But they do define manufacturing and manufacturing is defined in your zoning regulations. As the combination of raw materials, components and parts into finished goods. It's a very standard definition that you find in towns throughout Connecticut and quite frankly, throughout the country. But what does light mean in, in, in this context? Uh, Webster's dictionary provides us a little bit of help. Um, when it comes to industries and industrial uses, the words light, um, when applied to, to terms like manufacturing typically mean. Um, reference industries that, uh, produce goods primarily for end users and not simply for other manufacturers. They're sort of in the second line in the manufacturing process. Uh, it, their activities typically deal with processing or assembly of parts that have already been manufactured elsewhere. Uh, Black's Laws dictionary also has very similar language and indicates that light in the context of manufacturing uses. Uh, means generally less capital intensive operations, more labor intensive applications, and again, targeted primarily, but not exclusively. For end users. And so if you look at all these definitions together, I think it's very reasonable to conclude that light manufacturing, even though your regulations don't explicitly define it. Means co- combining raw materials, components and parts through labor intensive processes for delivery primarily to end consumers. And that's exactly what ZZ Powder Coating does. Um, powder coating itself is recognized as a light manufacturing use by the North American Industrial Classification System. It has its own code. Um, and so industry wide, uh, it is considered a light manufacturing use. Even planning, um, agencies, um, throughout the, the country and, uh, you know, as a former planner myself, I still subscribe to a lot of. Uh, planning journals and planning sources, um, have very similar definitions for light manufacturing, uh, as I've already discussed. Often you find, um, many towns also include issues relating to adverse externalities or adverse impacts. Light manufacturing is usually has very minimal adverse impacts. It has very little in terms of admissions or negative, um, in impacts to surrounding neighbor, uh, neighborhood. Um, properties, um, as opposed to, for instance, heavy manufacturing, which usually has emissions, might have noise or glare or exterior outside activities. Light manufacturing is typically considered in most communities across this country is really having little adverse impact. And that's quite frankly, I, in my opinion, why it's in your commercial zone as a special permitted use. Um, Dave and his son Zach have been in the powder coating business now, uh, for almost ten years. They've operated at their current location in New London for the last five. Um, they've been really successful. It's a great, it's a great story about a local business, um, making, making some headway. And, uh, they've outgrown their existing location and they want to come here to Waterford and they want to relocate, um, to this location off of Boston Post Road to continue their growth. Let's share another document, if you can just hold on with me for a second. This is the floor plan of the space. This is that first unit. Um, uh, the, uh, this is the main entrance here and there's also an overhead garage door. If you've been out to the site, the main entrance would come into sort of a showroom entry reception area. Um, they would have a couple of offices and a common area. And then the rear section of this four thousand square foot space would be for their manufact- light manufacturing processes. They have some staging areas, um, they have storage and filtering systems. They've got their powder application booth. I'll talk a little bit more about this in a second. Their cure oven, they've got their prep areas with sand blasting and they have some storage and bathroom mechanicals in the rear. For those of you who are unfamiliar with powder coating and quite frankly, I didn't know a lot about it when, um, Dave first called me. Um, it involves taking metal parts that are manufactured elsewhere. And processing them, preparing them by applying a durable plastic resin to them. Then baking that part covered in the resin, uh, in an oven to cure it and set it. Uh, the resin, interestingly enough, is applied via electrostatic charge and actually through a, a gun. That actually, um, uses electrons to create a molecular bond between the resin and the metal. And what's great about the process is it doesn't use any solvents, it doesn't create any harmful vapors or any hazardous waste. It's an environmentally clean process, very different than years ago when people use solvents and, and heavy paints to basically coat metal parts. Um, once these parts are, 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 are hit with the gun and the resin has been applied, um, they're cured in the oven. And the coatings, when they come out of the oven and cool are durable, they're highly resistant to chemicals, highly resistant to wear, chipping. And they're much stronger, as I said, than traditional paints and lacquers. More than eighty percent, and this is really important, and it goes to why this is like manufacturing, more than eighty percent of my clients' customers are end users. There are people who come and say, I have a metal part that I need you to process through your powder coating process and put and protect. Um, and that's, and that's really important to understand the operation, more than eighty percent of the people who, who we work for are end users, end consumers. For example, right now, and I talked to Dave this afternoon, Dave and Zach are currently working on several motorcycle frames. They're doing some tire rims. They actually have a weather vane that one of their customers has dropped off. They're doing some outdoor furniture, they're doing some boat cabinetry. Uh, and they have a variety of other smaller projects for personal items to, again, to apply this resin to metal to protect it and make it last. Uh, my client does provide some minimal work, which is a very small part of their business to, um, c- other companies. Um, they do work for, for example, American Systems, which manufactures metal parts for electric boat. And they actually will drop these parts off in a couple of small boxes and, um, ZZ Powder Coating will run those through a power, uh, powder coating. Um, process prior to delivery to E B and to the U S Navy. But again, this is a very small and, uh, minimal part of their overall work, uh, that they do. The best part of powder coating is that, as I said before, there's no adverse environmental impacts. There's no hazardous chemicals used or produced or wastes produced, there's no volatile organic compounds, there's no harmful vapors or fumes. Um, there is a small amount of sanding that is used, uh, there's actually a state, a sanding room or booth in the facility. Um, that's used to prep the metal items, but these are done in self-contained areas within the building. Um, and there's, in all of their cleaning areas have filter systems to make sure that there is no. Exterior emission or release outside of the building whatsoever. Everything is within the space. The operation is completely self-contained, there's no exterior storage, there's no exterior operations, nothing's done in the parking lot. Everything is inside the building and quite frankly, when this is operating, and I hope we get the approval to do that, when it's operating, you won't even know that they are other than a sign on the, on the, on the building. Um, there are very few customers on a daily basis. I talked with Dave and Zach in, on an average daily basis, they may see. Three to four customers a day come to the facility to either drop off or pick up an item or come to discuss a potential powder coating job. Um, it is a family-owned business, um, right now, it's really three or four employees, all family members. It's Dave and Zach, um, Dave's wife does the books. Um, it's, it's a very small, family-run business. They are growing, they are successful, they do good work, so they do hope to grow. But even if they grow later this year, they're looking at no more than five or six total employees for the company, and that's really what this building supports. Uh, they're open Monday through Friday, nine A M. to six thirty P M. And Saturdays, ten to five. And they are open by appointment only, so that's what's, how they've been doing it in COVID. So this isn't a place where people come and go, you have to call and make an appointment to meet with them and talk about the project that you want done. Um. We firmly believe that ZZ Powder Coating's operations qualify as light manufacturing under your regulation, but under regulations. Um, what their operations do is they, they combine previously manufactured metal parts with plastic resins. With a labor-intensive process of, with using the electrostatic gun and the, um, the oven cure. Um, to create finished products for delivery primarily to end users. And they have, this has absolutely no adverse environmental impact or negative externalities that may impact the neighborhood or the surrounding area. We think that the application meets the minimum requirements of your special permit criteria. We have provided, uh, with our package, a response to section twenty-three point five, the special permit findings. If I can just, I'm going to go back for a second, so I think this is a, this screen is, is really important. If you look at the location of this property, this is a general commercial zone property, as I said before, light manufacturing is allowed in the district. Your P O C D calls for keeping this, uh, general commercial. Um, so there's no, no impact with sort of the future land use plan at all. Um, this building has hosted over the last forty to fifty years a variety of similar uses. Um, um, and really, it's shown that it's appropriate and suitable site for these types of uses. I'd also note the significant buffers, vegetative buffers that are existing around the whole building. Like I said, if you haven't driven back here, you might not even know this building's back here. There are no residences right up on this, um, site. This is a well buffered, well separated, um, uh, location. Uh, again, it's, it's already established, we're only doing interior renovations, there's no exterior changes whatsoever. So issues like, um, effect on property values, uh, public safety, traffic considerations. Um, but changes in landscape and buffer, all things that you're supposed to look at for special permit, there's really no impact whatsoever by this proposal. Um, our, as I said before, we don't use a lot of water, we don't discharge, you know, hazardous materials into the se- the sewer system. So issues with utility, um, systems is not an issue, we have plenty and adequate utility systems. Again, we believe we're compliant with your zoning regulations. And I think maybe the best part about this is the proposal is going to take a vacant space right now. Um, in a, in a, an existing commercial light industrial building. And it's going to bring a growing business from a, from a nearby town to Waterford. A business that's going to have a lot of personal property and taxable property for the town of Waterford. It's going to allow a family business to grow here. And so I think that's really positive for, for the community and obviously for my client. That's all I have for you tonight. I'm willing to take any questions. I know both Dave and Zach are also on the call and Phil Gagnon's here for the, um, the landlord as well, the property owner. Um, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them. Uh, if there is any public comment, I just reserve the right, uh, to rebut. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any commission members have any questions or comments?
Hi, um, this is John. I, I do have some technical questions, I guess, about the operations, if I could ask, ask a few.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so what happens when the sand blast material is spent and no longer is usable for its purpose?
Okay.
Uh, Dave, if you could, if you could try to just.
Am I there?
Yep, Dave, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Okay, I'm, I'm Dave Zerzuski from ZZ Powder Coating. Uh, unfortunately, my son had to leave because he had an emergency, so it's just me, sorry, guys. Um, the sand blasting, we're, we have actually, we used to use, uh, recycled glass for our blasting. And now we're switching over to a new company called Epic, who is actually has a, uh, manufactured abrasive. That's completely environmentally safe and when the used abrasive is no longer effective, it could be disposed of normally in any kind of landfill. Uh, it has no adverse effects, even the glass is, there's really, it, it tends to pulverize and get caught in the filters to finally. There's really nothing left over, so there's very little amount, we probably, we go through. Maybe a hundred pounds of blast material a month and we probably have disposing of probably two or three. Cause the rest of it just becomes pulverized and gets caught in the filters and then the filters get disposed of, so is, there's no, uh. There's no, uh, bad things to it and we're hoping that the new media that we're working with now has a longer, is supposed to have a longer lifespan, which will be more economical for us. And again, they say that the, and they have documentation to prove it, that the, what it's made out of is completely, uh, acceptable to any normal landfill. So there's no hazardousness to throwing this away into the, the general, uh, you know, garbage stream has no adverse effects at all, so. Plus, you know, so that helps us with our environmental thing, but we're trying to, you know, we try not to impact anything, you know, especially ourselves. So, you know, this has less dust, it has even, has a zero silica amount. So I don't know if you're familiar with sand blasting, but all sand, glass has a certain amount of silica in it, which is not good for you. So this has virtually none, so switching over, even though it costs a little bit more, it has a longer lifespan and it has virtually no silica. So that makes it safer for us and, you know, anybody else that, you know, might come in contact with it later, so. That's about it.
And I noticed in the floor plan, there, there was no, um, uh, setup. In your operation for either acid dipping or acid etching as a prep for the material, so you don't do any of that, do you?
No, we don't do that, no, that, that, there are other people do that, we found that to really be in the past, it's, it's not cost-effective and it has no real benefit. Uh, a good, a good cleaning, we actually do, most of our cleaning with, uh, the, uh, purple power. For degreasing and stuff, which is, you know, a normal over-the-counter thing. And then a light glass blast, uh, takes care of everything and then we, and then we, the only volatile chemical we use in very small amounts is denatured alcohol. As a very good cleaner and there's no benefit to buying that in bulk, so we never really have more than a gallon of it on hand because. I can't buy it in bulk and save money, so I just go down and buy a can of it when I need it. Can usually last a month, it's.
So you have no plans as, as far as expansion goes for, for bringing in any kind of acid, acid.
No, 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 cost-effective wise, it doesn't make any sense because all the necessary equipment to make it work for the benefit is not. I mean, we do turn away work, sometimes people specify that they want to have that done and we just turn the works, I know I don't do that because.
Yeah.
To me, it's not worth it, it's, it, I'm not going to go into a, another area where I've got to expend a lot of money and worry about, you know, chemicals and stuff like that, that I don't have to, so.
And, you know. Dave, the, the metals that you usually work, are they bare metals? Are, are you taking in any? Metals, uh, objects or, or materials that have got paints or other materials on them that need to be stripped?
Oh yeah, some of the stuff, some of the stuff is, is older stuff, I mean, like, you know, the, he mentioned the weather vane, I got this antique weather vane that was made, you know. It was, it was actually made by the, the man's son when he was in high school and now he's graduating, uh, college and, you know, he wants to get it redone for him. So it had a paint on it, so, you know, we blasted the paint off and, and now we're re-coating it in a, in a new powder coat. So there are coatings on the stuff that come in, sometimes it's powder coat, which is much more difficult to remove because of its very nature. But, you know, it goes through the same process, it's removed, uh, by the blasting or by grinding and then, uh. You know, we get rid of, and, uh, it's, uh, Phil, I mean, as, uh, Phil mentioned briefly. It doesn't really show in the drawing because it's just a drawing, but the cleaning booth we have has a filter system, the sand blast room has its own reclaim filter system. The cabinet has its own fills, so everything we do, the exhausted, um. Dust and stuff is drawn into a system where it's collected and, you know, kept out of the general air. So because we don't have anything going outside, we have to make sure the air inside stays, you know, good for us. So we've taken the time to put the, you know, these systems together.
Okay, great, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I guess we can open up the public hearing. Um. You want to put the full screen back on?
Sure thing.
There we go. So, uh, we will now open up the public hearing for, uh, application request, P L dash twenty-one dash three. Uh, is there anyone from the public who would like to, uh, express anything for or against this application? I will say for the second time, is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this application? Third and last time, is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this application? All right, hearing none, um, I would say that we should be able to close this hearing. And I will accept the, uh, a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
And now I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Tim. Uh, all in favor, John?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
And I am, I also, the public hearing is now closed. Okay, we'll now move on to item five, application review. P L dash twenty-one dash three, request of ZZ Powder Coating LLC applicant. Forza Partners LLC owner for special permit approval for light industrial use at eighty-two Boston Post Road. C G zone in accordance with sections eight dot two dot eight, eight dot one dot fifteen and twenty-three of the zoning regulations. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, um, Mark, you have a summary?
Sure, yeah, um. Commission had in their packet, uh, and also as exhibit eight, uh, staff report for this application. Um, it's pretty standard, the, the. The only thing that I would like, well, a couple of things I'd like to point out here is that, um, uh, I performed the parking analysis on the, on the site. Uh, relative to the uses that are there currently and, uh, the amount of parking that was approved. Uh, on the latest site plan for that, for that property. Um, eighty-four spaces were approved, uh, back in, back in the, for the, uh, modified site plan back in the, uh, seventies. And with the current uses on site, uh, we're looking at a parking load, including, including ZZ Powder Coating if, um. If they get approved, we'd be looking at a parking load of fifty-two spaces, so, uh, there's certainly adequate parking on the site, uh, for this use. Um, the other, the other thing that I would like to point out is that in the staff report, uh, there are, there are two fine. There are, there are two findings that I have, that I've brought up and listed. Number one is. Basically, the, you know, the use is located in a CG zone district. Second one is that based on the, on the report of findings that were submitted into the record. That this use is consistent with those findings, sections. Twenty three point five point one through twenty three point five point nine. The third finding, which is something that the commission would need to make a determination on, is that this, this proposed use. As a, as a powder, powder coating, powder coating facility qualifies as light manufacturing. I kind of left that open for the commission because it's really up to them to make, to make that finding if they so, if they so choose. Along with that, there were, there were two conditions. If the commission does approve all the findings, there are, there are two conditions. One is that, is that the operation, all operations will occur within the building, inside the building. And that there will be no outdoor storage or display of products or materials outdoors. That was also brought up at the. With Attorney Sweeney's presentation. So with that, I think the commission at this point, we need to make a determination as to whether or not the use is considered light manufacturing.
Any comments? I'm not totally familiar with powder coating. I am somewhat familiar with the process. I guess my one question would be how, what would be the largest item you think he would bring into that? Facility to, to powder coat?
Well, the largest things I bring.
Hold on, the hearing has been closed. So.
I thought you were asking me, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm sorry. Typically, I, like I say, I don't know that much about powder coating. I know they use it in motorcycle industry and a lot of. Automobile industry, those types of things. It is a very durable finish. There's no doubt about it. So, but I have seen some of it on television and it is, is not a lot to it. As Attorney Sweeney identified. There's electric charges that place on the materials, not the material, but the item being powder coated. And then they have like a spray gun. It almost looks like a head dryer. And you'll see the material coming out of the head dryer and immediately adheres itself to. The item through an electrical charge. And then once it's coated, they, they put it in the oven and the bacon. So as far as light manufacturing, I certainly would think that this would fall into that category.
Yeah, and Joe, I think, you know, based upon the presentation and the, the outlay of the internal structure, regardless of what the size of the material is, it's all going to be. The other process is the sandblasting, but it's going to be done, they can only take in the materials that are big enough to go into the contained sandblasting unit. And, you know, so that's going to be, that's puts a limit on the size of the materials that they can, they can operate with anyway. And it's going to be within a contained structure.
Right.
I think in the record, the, the largest items we heard described that are currently being worked on were motorcycle frames. So I, I agree with everything that's been said. To me, this, this sounds squarely like light manufacturing.
I thank you, Tim. Any other comments? All right, with that said. We can entertain a motion.
Well, I, I move that we approve the special permit for application PL dash twenty one dash three. For ZZ Powder Coating LLC located at eighty two rear Boston Post Road. Unit one with the conditions one and two is set forth in the staff report and with the additional finding. That this particular proposed use qualifies as light manufacturing. With that, with those findings, I would further move that the commission approve the proposal with the following conditions. That all of the operations occur within the building. That there, and that there shall be no outdoor storage or display of product or materials.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Tim. Any further, any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, John?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
And I am I also. Motion is approved. Congratulations, gentlemen. Welcome to Waterford.
Thank you. On behalf of my client, thank you for the time tonight, guys. Look forward to seeing you again very soon. Have a great rest of your evening.
All right, you have a great night now.
Take care.
Okay, we can move on to. Item number six, correspondence.
Yeah, no.
No correspondence, thank you. Item number seven, administrative review, discussion of urban agriculture.
Sure, and as we said in a previous meeting, this, we made some changes to the proposed urban agriculture regulation amendment to clarify that. The intent of this and then the requirement that folks would have to meet is that urban agriculture would happen, happen as an accessory use to single family homes within the proposed district. So that's primarily what we tried to do is update language specific to that. That element and then also provided an updated graphic. Just to, to better clarify, since we, I believe we reduced the size of the minimum lot size relative to urban agriculture to, to the minimum. District for our twenty of twenty thousand square feet. And so we tried to clarify within this area, which. Which parcels would be large enough for a community garden and which ones would be large enough for an urban farm and which ones would be, would be too small for either application. So we did try to at least give a visual for that, that we would send out. To the residents who live in that area. So what we're looking for tonight is any, any final feedback before we send out a package to the folks whose properties would be included within the proposed overlay district. And then what we'll do from there is schedule a couple of different ways and a time for them to be able to. Give us comments to see if we need to make any further changes to the content of the proposed regulations before it comes to a formal process for review.
All right, thank you, Abby. Anybody have any questions?
I have one question. Abby, you just mentioned the community garden and I'm, I'm trying to remember, but in our previous discussion, did we talk about parking? Requirements if we have people coming and going from one that they don't live, you know.
I believe we did and we had a minimum number of spaces, but allowed them to be on a pervious surface or gravel. They didn't have to be paved. Again, to try to keep that sort of farming feel and not make improvements that were beyond what was. Yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine.
I have a follow up question on the, the community gardens aspect. In, let's see, section four A there, there's some blue text that's been added there. This says, and community agricultural uses. And I'm wondering if community agricultural use should be. Community garden, because it looks like that's a term that we're defining up in the definition section.
Yep, that makes sense.
That was all I had.
Thank you, Tim.
The, the structure for the, is that's, that's built for the farm stand that has to go through the building, building code compliance?
Right, so if it's, if it's under the minimum square footage required for a building permit, so if it's that sort of two hundred or under, then, then we would be in a zoning compliance only. Review. So it just depends on ultimately what the size would be. But still needs to meet all the requirements of the, of the district.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just, this is Greg, just looking at all the other requirements in the district, does that mean it can't go? In front of the front of the house? The front, the building line extrapolated to the side yards?
For a structure, yes. And I think that's because we kept it. Based on the last meeting in, as an accessory to, folks could put out a farm stand that is not a structure. They could have. You know, tables and carts and those types of things. But if it's going to be a permanent structure in the district, it would need to meet the zoning requirements of that.
What about the actual farming?
So the, you know, I'm not sure that we. We left, I think I kept it in here as structures, but I don't know that we are clear that the farming would have to take place. Behind that front building line. I think we can, we can clarify that if it's something that the commission is looking for. I do remember that. I do remember discussion on that. And I think what I, what I did here was sort of push the structure part of the conversation, but not the farming itself. So if we wanted to add that in, we could certainly do it.
I mean, I don't know.
Sorry.
I don't know where everyone else stands. I just, I'd like to keep it behind the, you know, the, the, the front of the building. You know, to the, keep it to the side yard and the backyard as opposed to, you know, the front yard, other than the stand or something like, you know, to sell it.
I thought we had discussed that at the last meeting where we said that the, the side yard up to the front of the building would be allowed. But anything beyond that towards the front of the road would not be allowed.
And I think that discussion did happen. And I think the language in this draft specifies the accessory structures. But needs to be stronger. What I'm hearing from, from Greg is, you know, that should be stronger language relative to the actual farming use where no structures are proposed. So it's not just if somebody puts up a greenhouse that it has to meet those, the setback requirements, but if the actual cultivation of the land has to stop at that front building line.
Yes. That's what I thought we were talking about.
So I'll make sure, I, I think I just overlooked adding that line in. So I.
Okay.
That's just my opinion. I don't know where everyone else stands. I just, I, I don't see it in here. You said that best language should be stronger. Where do you see? Are you saying it's in here somewhere?
So the structures are, are part and parcel of the underlying zone district. So they would be covered by the requirements in, in. How we evaluate structures in general. But, but what would need to happen is that language would need to be added to specify. That the area available on a property for any urban agriculture activity, including any structures and cultivation of the land. Would need to happen behind the front facade of the building.
Is everybody in agreement with that?
Just one.
I am.
Just, just one question, I would say. Of the properties in, in that area that we're looking at or that have expressed interest in this. I mean, is there one that's set way back that they'd be losing half their property if it had to require, you know, if it had to be?
Not, not of the ones that are operating or, no, no. And, you know, again, it's, it's the R twenty district. So there's not, you know, a huge setback for that front area required. So, so I think there's. There's opportunity there for folks to fit. And again, you know, the intent here is, is that I think the commission has been very clear is that. This is, this is an accessory or subordinate use to the, the single family home or the primary use established property. And so to maintain that accessory nature. Keeping it sort of back and behind makes, makes some sense. I mean, somebody could do this. Quite frankly, under, you know, if we, if we go down this road, somebody could go, you know, one foot back from the front of the house and, and do it that way. And still have a big piece come out of it.
So, so we'll allow parking out front and a farm stand out front, but the crops need to be in the back or on the side.
That's what I'm hearing. Okay.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess to me, it doesn't bother me if, if someone's growing plants in their front yard, but, you know, it looks like when I was reading it before, we, we have things baked into the, the current draft regulation that would keep, you know, the equipment and vehicles, you know, back out of sight. And I guess this is just more sort of a comment, but, you know. People grow all sorts of different plants in their yards. And I just, I know in my neck of Waterford here, just down the street from me, there's. A couple of families at least that have pretty extensive gardens in their front yard. You know, certainly something that could support a farm stand. They just don't happen to have a farm stand. And. To me, it just seems, it seems like there's a little bit of a. Tension there between us saying, you know, you have to keep all of your, your plant growing in the, you know, behind the, the building line. You know, I guess the difference here being, I guess I'm thinking out loud here, but I guess the difference just being here that this is an accessory commercial use. So is that sort of the distinction that we'd be drawing there?
I, I think you'd have to make that clear. And, you know, again, there's, there's a wide range of the things that people could be growing and what those look like. And I think it just depends on. The threshold for, because the. Staff and the zoning official would not be regulating whether somebody's, you know, tomato vines look pretty. And so, you know, if somebody's growing a nice flower field for cutting and they're going to sell those up at the farm stand, you know, chances are there would be some, some broad. You know, sort of buy in or support. But if, you know, I think as folks know, sometimes vegetable gardening and that kind of stuff doesn't always look as. You know, sort of aesthetically pleasing as some other things. And so. If we're introducing it as sort of a commercial use, one of the things that I do think it's important to try to minimize is. Folks, you know, sort of using the zoning official as sort of the HOA officer when we wouldn't be touching aesthetics. We have other standards, obviously, relative to compost and machinery and all those types of things and light trespass and all the rest of it. But. You want to be careful about not being sort of the pretty police about, you know, whether somebody's flush trellises is kept the way somebody else might want it to be. And I think those issues become much more prominent in front yards. That doesn't say that if somebody wanted to have a garden in their front yard, that they couldn't do that on a private, you know, for a private use. But the question for the commission, I think, is, is, is that commercial distinction enough to prohibit? Those gardens from happening at the front yards? And then what is the sort of comfort level of folks for that?
Yeah, I think, I think you convinced me. The more I listen to you there and thinking about it, just the, the commercial nature of it is going to, you know, potentially encourage people to do a lot more than they would if this was just their own private, you know, vegetable garden for their own household. But. Yeah, that, that makes sense. And I think. From an enforcement standpoint, too, having that, you know, bright line rule of it's got to be back behind the building line, you know, that, that makes sense.
Okay, so we're going to add that language into this then, Abby?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll look, we'll look for more on this then.
So, yeah, and so from the commission's perspective, I'm curious what your comfort level is with us adding that language in as sort of draft coming out of the commission. Simultaneously with, with bringing it back for your review at the end of April, but it, but getting it out to the residents sooner rather than later, or if you'd rather wait and see that final draft before we do neighborhood outreach?
What's your pleasure?
I think this is simple enough. I don't think, I personally need to see another draft before you send it out to the neighborhood.
Is with that language included? Yeah. Is everybody in agreement with that? Tim, you are?
Yep.
Greg?
Yes.
And Karen?
That's fine.
All right, so I guess we have our direction now.
And what we'll do is I will, when, when we have our package of information that's going out to the neighborhood, we'll make sure the commission gets a copy of it as well, so that you see exactly. Or receive in case, you know, anybody has questions.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Okay, the next item, discussion of commission officers. As everybody knows, I am resigning my position on the commission. It's not something I wanted to do, but unfortunately circumstances have arose that I have no choice. I'm going to be leaving the town of Waterford, so therefore I will not be able to hold a position on the commission any longer. So. The first selectman will have to look to fill another position. Hopefully, I would hope that Karen will now become a regular commission member if she so desires. But then again, it's up to the first selectman. Is that correct, Abby?
It is. And I, I do think that, that his intent is to look for, you know, and, and most, most folks would look for alternates to come up. And so Karen, you know, we can certainly have a conversation about that and you can have a direct conversation for selectmen about what. These are, and we can certainly go, go from there.
Okay, thank you. So. I have one more meeting and then I will be leaving the commission at the end of the month. So we need to look at somebody who is willing to hold the chair position. I don't know if anybody is willing to do that. Typically, in the past, as far as I know, it's almost been like a step. Typically, in the past, as far as I know, it's almost been like a stepping stone type thing by seniority, as you have been on the commission. I know the next senior person to me right now is John. Uh, so I'm not going to try to influence any of this, but it's up to the remaining commission members to come up with a a chair.
And and let me, let me do a couple of things. First, um, you know, I I'm not going to speak for the rest of the commission. Uh, but having been here probably the longest, it's been a real pleasure working with you, Joe. Um, you've, uh, you had a nice, solid, consistent guidance for the commission. Uh, it's been a real pleasure. Uh, when I first joined the zoning commission, when I was asked to do so, I kind of groaned and thought, oh. But you've actually made it tolerable and a pleasure to do. So thank you. Thank you very much. The other comment, the other comment I'm going to make is. You know, with respect to me, I I've, I don't know how many years I've done it. But my expect, personal expectation is I will probably be doing this for maybe one more year. Um, I don't expect to be doing it. Longer than that. So, you know, as we, as I think about that, I I think probably I would be a poor option. Uh, to lead the commission because it would be for a short period of time. I I think having consistency over a number of, number of years is a good thing to have. Um, that's my personal feeling. And, um, you know, that's, those are the two comments that I want to make.
Thank you, John. Uh, you know, this is a, it's an unfortunate situation because I really don't want to leave the commission. If it was a workaround, I wish we could do it, but I know we can't. So, um, I've enjoyed working on every one of you folks. It's been a pleasure. Uh, the staff has been great. Um, so I've enjoyed this and it's been a great learning experience for me as well. So, um, I'm going to miss it, but, um, the the commission is going to need some, some leadership in in a chair's position, so. Um, I don't know if anybody is willing to volunteer and then, um, you know, open a discussion with the commissions for vote. Um, but we only have so many. Um, and right now, I don't think Karen is eligible because she's an alternate. Is that correct? Yeah, so until she's appointed, um, you know, to a full commission member, so that leaves us three. In Tim, Greg and John. Now, John has expressed his interest in, um. Not taking that position, so we've got two people left.
This is Greg. Um, I I think you've been a great leader, Joe. I think I put that in the email, very steady handed, great steward. Were in a great meeting and. Et cetera. Sorry to see you go. I I thought John was going to step right into it. He would be a great leader too, and I, I think, I think seniority is the way it should go. We made it next, which I'm not really, hadn't really thought about it because I thought John was going to be all set with it. Uh, and I think he'd be a great leader. Maybe, John, if you take it for a year, you'll like it so much that you you do stay.
Coercion.
Well, my, my comment is this, I, you know. If there, we, you know, I don't want it to be a surprise, let's put it that way. I I I don't want us to take particular action then, then to be this, to be surprised or upset. If, um, you know, a year, a year along the path, I I do what I think I'm going to be doing, which is, you know, moving on to 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 other opportunities and other things, so. You know, if if somebody's looking for somebody for me to do it for a year, I I could, I could commit to that. But, you know, that's about the best I can do.
Well, let me ask you this question, and and not necessarily John, but to Tim and Greg, do either one of you have, um, you know, aspirations of wanting to be the chair for the commission?
Well, this is Greg. I I don't know aspiration is the right word. Um, I, I, I wouldn't mind it. I'd like to see the Crystal Mall go, you know. Through with that whole area and development and the frontage road. So, I mean, I, I certainly want to be on the commission. I don't. Just aspiration was the, I'm unsure that was really the right word for me, but, um. I I was, I was thinking maybe, uh, that if John was going to take it, that I I would like to be vice chairman, but I. But I I would be interested in the chairman if if it comes down to the line. John's only going to be there a year.
All right. Tim, do you have anything?
Yeah, well, first, I just want to echo everything everyone else has said about your leadership. I've appreciated it for the past two years, and I I feel I've learned a lot from your steady hand. You know, I I I think I'm a bit like Greg, you know, I'm I'm certainly willing to serve, uh, you know, i- if needed. Um, I actually came here. Tonight, thinking that I might nominate John, and, you know, even knowing that he might only be. Do this for another year, I'd certainly happily follow John for the next year and. Um, you know, I'm sure we'll all learn a lot from his leadership as well.
All right, so Greg, you and Tim, do you either have, um. Would like to serve beyond your current tenure? Um, I mean, they're five year terms, so. Are either of you looking to serve beyond that?
Well, I guess that's something that I I should mention. I I'm pretty sure my term ends in June. Um, you know, I am hoping to continue serving on the commission beyond that. But I suppose that's up to the board of selectmen.
Right.
Correct. I know that the first selectman is having, is going through applications. I know that people routinely contact him relative to joining various boards and commissions. We're not privy necessarily to all of those pieces, but I think if there's an interest in staying on, I think it's, it's good to reach out directly to him. Um, and and just express that interest and and make sure that he knows about it. Um, and and that would be a good place to start.
Okay.
So. Like I said, I don't want to influence anybody on, or 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 try to. Influence them to do what they don't want to do. But I guess it was, my suggestion would be right now, um, it sounds like John would be willing to do it for a year. Or, uh, you know, as he's has brought up himself, he only plans on serving for possibly another year. Uh, with that in mind. Um, Tim, I think you'd be a solid candidate as well. And perhaps you gain another year's experience on the commission, and then you would be well suited to fill in for John. So I don't know if that's a situation that sounds reasonable to everybody.
Um, I I I'm going to make an alternative. I I. And and I respect every single person on this commission, um, in their qual, in the quality of their thought. I I've noticed with Greg and some of the matters that we've had, Greg takes the extra step on a lot of these things. He will go and pull old files. And and look at things to really dig into some of the arguments and positions that are being made. And, and, you know, I'm not a longtime resident of Waterford. I love being here, uh, but I've only been here since two thousand and fifteen, so I don't have the history. With this town, and I think Greg does, and I think. Commission chairperson, uh, having that history with the town. Uh, and carrying it forward for a couple of years, it would be a great value. I I certainly can administer things and maintain things for a year, but I think we're at a point where. That may not be enough. I mean, we have the housing survey going out and 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 those issues, we've got the mall issue, so. I'm just going to come out, I I'm going to, I I nominate Greg. I'm going to nominate Greg for the position of chairperson of of the commission. I think. He would be a, I think he's shown that he has the interest and he has the desire. Um, and, um, and the capability, so, and that's not to disparage anybody else, uh, by any, any stretch. But I, I I would certainly serve. I would certainly do it. I just think Greg might have more of a a drive and a, a strong desire and interest in the town. Uh, from his history with it. So I I nominate Greg.
John, I agree with exactly what you just said, and I didn't mean to leave Greg out. I. Thought I got the impression that Greg did not want to serve as a chairperson. That's why I didn't say anything. Um, but I agree with you. I believe Greg is 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 just as solid as anybody else we've got, and maybe more so in some categories. So, um, I'm going to second that motion.
This is Greg. I I, I certainly would be interested. I just, I just was surprised that that John wasn't interested. That's why I meant that I didn't come to the meeting. Uh, looking to do that. I just, I I I would accept it if if the commission. Supported it. I I certainly would. I I'm very interested in it. I I like land use. Uh, thank you for the kind words. I do spend the time. I read everything. Uh, I I do the extra homework. I think the procedure of the meetings, we do get a lot of help from Abby and Mark and and Dawn, so that would be the the biggest part. I think, but, you know, I'm interested in making the the meetings user friendly that that we've had. I'd like to make everything. That's my goal too, is to keep it user friendly.
All right, Greg, thank you. So with that, we have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. Uh, I think we should vote on that. So, uh, I will start with you, John.
Um, I, I guess I, yes, I I vote for Greg to be chairperson.
Okay, Tim?
Hi.
Karen?
I I would say I, and I'd also like to echo what everyone else said about how much we appreciate all the work that you've put into and that. Having you move on will be a bit of a loss to the commission.
Thank you. Greg?
Hi.
And I am I also. Congratulations, Greg. Um, so I would assume that, John, you would remain as secretary?
I I can remain a secretary. Do we have a position for as vice chair?
No.
No, the commission's never had that role.
Um, I I I am, I am fine with staying on as secretary because it is a a title only, so.
Yes, it is.
Fine with me. I'm also happy to hand the title over to Tim if he's so, so desirous of having the title.
Well, typically, the secretary also stands in for the chair when the chair is unable to make meetings.
Well, I I will be happy to hold that title for one, for one more year.
All right, great. So, um, I guess we are in good shape then. Okay, so that takes care of that. So thank you, everybody, for tonight. I really appreciate the nice comments, and, um, we will see you in the next meeting. All we need now is in a German.
Uh, Joe, is this your last meeting?
No, I will have one more.
Okay, great. And I hope, uh, I hope things are well.
But. But, but you will be the chair and I will be a commission member.
Okay, so Abby, I'll be.
Well, we'll re J, we'll, we'll chat over the next couple of days. Yep.
Thanks.
All right, so we're looking for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, everybody in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, thank, thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
And I'll see, see you next meeting.